These two of the commissioners which will help us constitute a quorum will be here in five minutes. Appreciate your patience. I have a quorum. Let me call to order the special meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Thursday, August 10th, 2023, and the time is 9:08 a.m. And the item to be discussed is, Item 3.1, the City Commission serving as the selection committee. We'll hear presentations from the top three ranked qualified proposers as recommended by the city's audit committee and inquire of and select one of the top three ranked proposers for financial audit services under the request for proposal 22-23-221 DL. Ms. Levin Good, are you gonna lead this discussion?
Yes, thank you.
Before you start, however, I have to disclose that I have a conflict where we accuse myself. My family's personal accountants are a sub for one of the groups. So I will not be able to vote, nor will I be able to participate. So sorry to have to do that to you, but commissioners, you all are left with this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Donna Levin Good, procurement official. It is August 10th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. And a little bit of administrative housekeeping. Commissioners in front of you, there is an evaluation oath that is standard for each member of a selection committee to read and to sign. And if you could, please do that for me, and I'll collect those today. So the city issued RFP 2223221 for financial audit services to secure an independent certified public accounting firm to provide financial audit services to the city and to the CRA for the audits of the financial statements for five fiscal years, beginning October 1, 2022, and ending on September 30th, 2027. So today's meeting is an overview of the process, which is governed by Florida statute 218.391. We'll hear presentations from the top three ranked qualified proposers as recommended by the city's audit committee, and then selection by the governing body, the city commission, and then adjournment. So the statute tells us that the auditor selection committee shall establish factors to use for the evaluation of the audit services, shall publicly announce the RFP, provide interested firms the RFP, evaluate proposals, rank and recommend in order of preference no fewer than three firms deemed to be the most highly qualified. The governing body shall, if compensation is one of the factors, establish pursuant to paragraph 3A, which we just read. The governing body shall select the highest ranked qualified firm or must document in its public records the reason for not selecting the highest ranked qualified firm as recommended by the audit committee. The audit committee established the factors of experience and expertise, understanding and approach, capacity, fee structure, equal opportunity, which included an 18% small business goal, and other factors which included litigation. On June 16th, the city issued the RFP. On July 18th, that was the proposal's submittal deadline. Seven proposals were timely received, and for the record, in alphabetical order, the proposals were received from Car, Riggs, and Ingram, Cherry Becker, Markham, Malden and Jenkins, McConnell and Jones, MSL, and RSM. On August 3rd, the audit committee met, heard presentations from each of the seven proposers, evaluated, and ranked. The audit committee recommendation to the city commission of the top three most highly qualified firms. Number one, Markham. Number two, Cherry Becker. And number three, RSM. All three met the small business goal, and the small business participation firms are listed to the right. For the record, this is the audit committee ranking sheet. There were a total of 400 possible points, 100 points per audit committee member, or 400 total. And so the points ranged from 308 for the lowest ranked proposer up to 352 for the highest ranked proposer. So our first ranked proposer, Markham, received 352 total points. Second ranked proposer, Cherry Becker, received 342. And third ranked proposer, RSM, received 339.
A quick question for you. Do you have that printed for us by chance?
I do, but I don't have that many copies, but I'd be happy to get that for you, yes.
Thank you. And then point of order question, Madam City Attorney, who's running this meeting with the mayor being out?
The, your president is also not present.
Correct.
So you will select one of your members to run the meeting.
Should we do that now?
Sure.
Christie?
Commissioner Fox, since you served as president most recently, would you like to oversee the operations of this meeting?
Sure.
Do we need to vote on that, Madam Attorney?
Go ahead and vote. Do a motion second.
I make a motion that Commissioner Fox should serve as chair of the selection process today.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Say aye.
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 Aye. It sounds like motion passes, so thank you, Commissioner Fox.
So we'll have copies of those for you in just a moment.
Thank you.
Miss Welcome. So we're going to hear presentations from each of the three. It is the same presentation that was provided to the audit committee. The presentations are going to be up to 15 minutes in duration, followed by up to 15 minutes in questions and answers from each of the firms. The presentations, again, are on industry experience, technical expertise, the ability to provide timely reports that meet the city's reporting deadlines, audit fees for each year, and a plan to address potential changes in key staff and staff shortages to ensure fulfillment of the contract. And so I'm going to introduce first ranked firm, Markham.
Hello. Good morning, city commissioners and meeting attendees. My name is Mo Riza, and I serve as an audit partner with Markham LP and also as a government service practice leader for our firm. Here with me today are two of my colleagues, Scott Montgomery and Enrique Yarena, and I'll let them introduce themselves shortly. First of all, I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our firm and to showcase our experience and cover those five questions that the audit committee shared with us. What we did at Markham was assemble a team that reflects the needs and requirements to fulfill complete and accurate audit service project for the city of West Palm Beach. I myself will serve as the audit partner, will take the lead responsibility to ensure that we ensure that all the audit is performed throughout all the professional standards and meet the timing requirements set forth through in the RFP. In the right of me, Ms. Bela Sherman serves as a quality control department head. Every audit that goes out of Markham does have a quality control process. The nice thing about Bela is that she was part of the audit team that served the city back in 2011 through 2015. So she has that institutional knowledge that helps us through the audit approach. The third individual, Joe Lane, is also another audit partner that is assigned to the audit engagement, but he brings an IT focus. He's an IT audit partner. The nice thing about Markham and being a national firm, a top 12 national firm with over 4,000 team members, is we have the IT resources in-house. So everyone that you see in our proposal or in our presentation are full-time employees of Markham. This is not a joint venture or an alliance for an IT approach. Everybody there, we have the resources in-house. Scott?
Good morning, city commissioners. I'm Scott Montgomery. I'm the senior manager on the engagement. And I have extensive experience in governmental CRAs, special districts, single audits, and nonprofit entities. And previously to becoming a CPA doing the accounting profession, I was in the, a logistics officer in the U.S. Army, and I retired as a lieutenant colonel.
Thank you, Scott.
In addition to Scott, Greg and Jason are also part of the audit team. Everyone that you see here on this slide deck is individuals that are part of our government practice, and we spent our entire careers in a year-round approach to just the government sector. We do not focus on any other industry. We service counties, local municipalities, CRA, special districts, and government pension plans 12 months out of the year. As part of the audit team, we created a partnership with an SBE firm located here in Palm Beach County. Enrique?
Thank you, Mo, and good morning. My name's Enrique Yarena, and I'm a partner with CFLG. Our firm has been in practice for over 40 years, and I personally have over 18 years of experience. Actually started my career at Markham and then joined the firm in 2016. We are a certified small business enterprise in Palm Beach County, which is why Markham has given us the opportunity to be part of the team. In terms of our practice, we serve not only in the capacity of an SBE firm, but we also serve as the main primary auditor for over 17 municipalities here in South Florida, as well as 16 governmental pension plans. So this is a sector that we focus on. It represents 80% of our practice, and this is what we do year-round. So our team and the people that you see on this slide, they're full-time employees of our firm. We do not bring on any contractors to work as part of our teams. These are employees that are trained within our system of quality control. As part of our process and execution, there are going to be two partners involved in the process, as well as the filter that's going to go through when we provide our work to Markham. We have a proven track record of serving as a successful SBE. We have another contract that we serve with them. We've done that for over 10 years. And our system and process that we use is very similar, so it's a seamless experience from a client perspective. You will be dealing with one firm and one message, and we've done that successfully in the past. In terms of our retention, in the past five years, maybe we've lost two or three team members, and those team members have actually changed careers. It's not that they went to another firm. Part of our management process is we put people first. That allows us to have the technical expertise necessary to serve this sector, and it's a cohesive team. So the people actually change careers. One became a Realtor, another one is a day trader. And we stay in touch. We consider them CFLG alums. It's just part of our process, putting people first, and we've had success with that. So thank you for the opportunity to present my firm, and I want to turn it back to Mo.
Thank you, Enrique.
So what is it that differentiates us from our competitors? And as a city, you have multiple choices of who to select as your auditor. And we believe it's a client service approach, and we believe and we approach client service by providing at Markham what is known as a VIP approach, treating our clients as VIPs. That is value, innovation, and productivity. When it comes to value, we've been doing this for over 70 years, focused in the government sector. We are a local firm. We're located here in downtown West Palm Beach. Innovation, we use a technology to the best of our abilities to not only provide an efficient audit, but also a very highly effective audit. And we'll talk about the paperless environment and the softwares that we use later in the presentation. And then when it comes to productivity and price, we do provide a competitive audit fee. Our audit fee that has been proposed for fiscal year 2023 is less than the audit contract that we had with the city of West Palm Beach back in 2015. So eight years after, we've applied the benefits of technology and passed on those savings to the city of West Palm Beach. Also, as mentioned in our proposal, we went ahead and promised eight hours of free technical training to your city staff on an annual basis. If you have CPA in staff or individuals that have to renew their licenses and required to have CPE credits, at a minimum, we guarantee eight hours. And also, as mentioned in our proposal, there's no additional cost for implementation guidance for pronouncements. Specifically, in fiscal year 2023, the city is going to have to apply or implement GASB 96, which is a robust standard. We're there to assist with the implementation of the standard from footnotes to helping them digest some of the contracts. The four steps of the audit methodology are start off with strategic planning, then execution of the plan, the results, and then the completion and delivery. I just want to mention, one of the questions was ensuring that our work product is produced on a timely basis. As mentioned, we were the auditors back in 2011 to 2015, and pleased to say that the city back then did not have to go on an extension to meet the March 31st deadline. Going back to the IT approach, outside of everything I told you, it's been verified by a third party. Accounting today has no alliance with us. They're an independent third party, and they have identified Markham as the best firm for technology both in 2019 and 2022. And that's critical, given the fact that the new, if you might be aware, the Local Government Cybersecurity Act, which is a requirement that the city must adhere to effective January 1st, 2024. And we've assisted many municipalities to tailor their approach, ensuring that they adhere and comply with the Florida Local Government Cybersecurity Act. And we're here to help, if need be, with the city of West Palm Beach and provide our recommendations and advice. Inflow is a software that we use. We are transmitting a lot of information, a lot of sensitive information between the city and Markham, from HR files to bank account information to customer profile for utility bills, very sensitive information. Inflow is a software that everything is encrypted in the cloud, so rest assured that all this information is protected. We take protection and sensitivity of this information very seriously. When it comes to quality control, pleased to mention, we've been around for 70 years, and in our tenure in our history of the firm, we've never had litigation from a government entity in 70 years, something we're very proud of. Also, the third bullet point I'll highlight very quickly, peer review. Just like the city, auditing firms have to be audited as well. And who audits us? It's the AICPA peer review program. In order to go ahead and audit other CPAs firms throughout the nation, you must be approved as a team captain. I'm pleased to mention that I've been approved by the AICPA to be a team captain, so I teach auditors how to audit across the U.S. And what that brings about is rest assured that the audit of the city of West Palm Beach will always be performed at a high standard and meeting rules, laws, and regulations. When I mentioned previously, there was a free training. We've been doing this for 28 years. It's not something new. We've been providing it through what is known as the Markham Government Symposium. When we typically host this event throughout the months of October and November, and again, we guarantee a minimum of eight hours, but last year, we did provide our clients 22 hours of training. So again, a benefit and value that we bring to our clients. So if I could touch on some of the other points that were asked in the questionnaire of the five questions is, once again, why Markham? It's that VIP approach, value, innovation, and productivity. We are local, so we plan to do the audit onsite, and that brings about no travel-related costs. We're not going to be, we don't intend to do it hybrid or to do remote. We'll do it as city staff prefers, but we do prefer to be onsite to assist them throughout the audit process. We are a large firm. Our turnover rate in our government practice is less than 5%. We are 4,000 strong, so again, we do have a long tenure of our employees as part of the firm. As mentioned, no additional cost for implementation guidance throughout the contract. And we have a track record, not only with the government clients in the state of Florida, but also with the city of West Palm Beach, and I'll mention that now, shortly in the next slide. And then lastly, it was previously mentioned that this audit, not only, our audit RFP not only covers the city, but it covers the CRA. It won't be the first CRA we audit. I believe in the proposal, we made reference to 10 local CRAs that we audit in the state of Florida, which is important because the rules and laws that CRAs have to adhere to in the state of Florida are different in Georgia, Tennessee. So you want to make sure that you partner with a firm that has extensive experience within the state of Florida. Experience, experience, and experience. We've been doing this for 70 years, and we're fully committed to the sector. We do 300 government audits a year. So we're, it's not a potpourri of industries. At Markham, we selected to be the specialists in the government sector. If you compare us to some firm that is not fully committed to the sector, they might do 20 or 30 a year. It takes them about a decade to be exposed to what we see on an annual basis. 300 entities that we perform audits, financial statement preparation in some cases, implementation guidance, consulting services. So again, fully committed. And 200 single audits. And 200 single audits is another term for audits specifically to federal and grant award testing. So if you receive money from MARPA, from the federal government, or from the state, there's special grant testing that is required. We do much of that throughout the year. At the bottom, something that we're very pleased about is our clients put pen to paper and write reference letters for us. Many of them were included in the proposal, the city of Sunrise, city of Boca Raton, Deerfield Beach, city of Homestead, Palm Beach County, Boden Beach, Doray Beach. And we don't take that lightly because it takes, it speaks volumes to how pleased they are with our product. And then lastly, outside of everything I tell you, I think the experience that we've had with the city of West Palm Beach speaks volumes. We audited the city of West Palm Beach from 2011 to 2015 and completed all five years of the contract. We also are the current auditors of the ECR, the East Central Regional Water Treatment Plant, and we currently work with city staff, and they could speak to any, their approach and our approach of how we do business. And then lastly, in 2022, we provided an internal control project for the city of West Palm Beach regarding its water toxin incident, which brought a lot of value to the city of West Palm Beach. Outside of the fun that we have from auditing, we also give back to our community, and we do that through the Markham Foundation. I believe we're the first CPA firm in South Florida to create a non-for-profit, and it speaks volumes to how deeply rooted we are in our community. In regards to the city of West Palm Beach, it's not only the place we work, it's the place we live, we play, and we give back. In the middle of the slide, you see a picture of us with BurgerFi. We partnered with BurgerFi this year to give 20,000 meals to our healthcare heroes during the pandemic. And then at the bottom is a picture of the Markham Day of Service. The day before Thanksgiving, we closed all of our 32 offices. And nobody could work, nobody could do a tax return, nobody could do an audit. And we give back to our community. That's a picture of us partnering with Feeding South Florida, where we distributed food and necessities to families in the And we give back to our community. That's a picture of us partnering with Feeding South Florida, where we distributed food and necessities to families in need. That summarizes our presentation, and I'll open up to any questions. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to present our firm and our team.
Thank you so much. We will open it up to questions from our commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Ward.
Actually, I'll pass, I'll pass right now. Sorry. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and for going into detail about your experience. I really appreciate that. Okay, so you mentioned that, a few questions. You mentioned seventeen cities that you work with municipalities in South Florida. Is that the extent of your Florida experience or just South Florida?
Our S B partner is seventeen. Ours ourselves is fifty in South Florida.
Very good. And then can you clarify then the C R As? Is that number need to be clarified between those two entities as well?
Correct. So it's fifty government entities included in that is the C R As. In some cases, we'll audit just the C R A. In some cases, we'll audit both the city and the C R A.
Okay, great. And then just related to that experience, my question is, you had a slide dedicated to innovation and efficiency, and I was just curious if you could tell us about a specific time that may be in your experience working with those fifty governmental agencies where you really had to think outside of the box and utilize and implement some of this innovation to help a governmental agency provide their audit in efficient manner?
If I could, I'd give you two examples.
Wonderful. Thank you.
The first example was on the audit approach, if you were to say, how do you test utility bills? The way we would do it ten decades ago is you'll get a register, and you do a sample size, and you will have a human recalculate the bills, go back to the ordinance, look at the meter rates per meter size, and recalculate the amounts. Now what we have is we have a bot. So instead of doing a sample size, we'll talk to your utility billing department, and it'll give us a data dump of utility bills. So we would say, before, we would test sixty selections, have a human test those sixty selections, and any exceptions, we'll extrapolate that into the entire population. Now we're getting close to almost testing ninety-five percent of the entire population. So now not only are you being more efficient, because it's not a human, you have a, but you're being more effective. And by doing that is, we have the bot work overnight, and the next day, what we do now, instead of actually doing the recalculation, is we look at the results, and we're able to produce a better value to our clients. On the other side, when we did some consulting was, we had a client that asked us, I want to make sure that I'm properly at a county level, that it was a county that they had a concern with a homestead exception. If you misapply homestead exception, or somebody is improperly getting homestead exception, not only are they paying less taxes, but not only are they paying less taxes on the first year, they're paying in perpetuity. So what we did and assisted them was creating a bot to try to compare homestead exceptions against local business tax and looking at those, how businesses are being registered, maybe in having coincidence or improperly are being applied for homestead exception. So, and that resulted in some savings. We provided them the results, and they are in the process of digesting that information to ensuring that, how do they proceed? Is it, is it, what recourse do they have to ensure that they're not losing on taxpayer funds to fund the county? So that's on both sides.
Madam Chairman, may I just ask a follow-up to that?
Yes.
Thank you. I love that idea of this bot. Is that included in the services of the audit? Or is that a solution that then, should the governmental agency want to engage in that, that that would be outside of the engagement?
So, so a bot, a bot is an application that it always has a base, but it always has to be tailored to each individual client. So we have bots that we do for the audit, and we're going to apply those bots in order to increase efficiency and effectiveness for the City of West Palm Beach. But once I have that bot and I start the City of West Palm Beach, I do have to tailor that bot because the E R P software that this city uses is not the one as your surrounding city. So it's nothing that you could pretty much mass produce because it has to be tailored to each individual entity.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
When you talk about, and thank you, that I actually love those questions because it kind of gives them more of an example. And I was thinking, you know, what do you usually, across these different governmental bodies, find that's a kind of the standard of like, hey, these are, these are ways to improve? Or maybe this is what we noticed that, that, you know, every single government has that they could step up or even software development, things like that, if you could kind of go into that a little bit?
Good question. So our approach is twofold. It's not only to be here during the audit. It's not set it and forget it. That's not how Markham works. We're local, and throughout the years, our clients reach out to us with questions. And our approach is, not only does it help the client, but it also helps us. If you enter into an agreement or a P P P agreement, partnership agreement, public partnership agreement, sometimes we ask our clients, please reach out to us, let us help you digest those contracts because the accounting treatment and disclosure requirements for that is very unique and complex. And I'd rather help you walk you through it, so there will be no surprises throughout, throughout the audit process. And then also, on audit, it's supposed to, the product that we produce is an opinion on your financial statements, saying, are these financial statements complete and accurate? Why, why is that necessary? Not only for the public, for the public, but also for your bonds and for your debt. But also outside of that, we provide what are known as best practices. And we come about it through what's something called a communication to those charged with governance. In that communication to those charged with governance, we provide you best practices and say, hey, for example, the most common one that we were doing was, we were sitting down with the I T department and city management and telling them, these are the risks of cybersecurity. You could have the best protocols, you could have the best firewalls. Unfortunately, knock on wood, one day it's going to happen. So we approach not only to identify what are the risk points, but also maybe consider getting cybersecurity insurance. And if you don't have that benefit, what's the cost versus benefit to having cybersecurity insurance? So again, our approach is not just to be here during the audit and produce a piece of paper that says you have a clean A plus report. It's also to be there to give you best recommendation and advice for the city.
Thank you. I think over the past couple of years, since COVID, we've been seeing some of our contracts go up in price or changes in different industries. I'm wondering how, I saw on one of your slides, it said, no travel-related costs, which is excellent. I'm glad that you all are local. But I'm wondering, how can you ensure that there will be no additional costs that go up from what we were quoted? And if that's ever happened in, for other clients, can you just describe it a little bit?
So as a firm, we're committed to the government sector, so once, technology has changed. If you look at when we were auditing the City of West Palm Beach back in 2011 to today, technology has changed in those twelve years. And we decided as a firm to pass on those savings to our clients because we're fully committed. When we, when we provided our proposal, we provided our proposal based not only what we understand it takes to audit the City of West Palm Beach based on our past experience, but also we compare you to some of our other clients. How do we compare you? Taxable value, your general fund budget versus how many funds you have. So we understand, and we truly project that this would be the cost. Also, it is an all-inclusive fee inside the proposal. We guarantee that we do not expect any overages. And regarding to additional billings for some of our clients is, they're not additional billings in regards to the audit. When I come, when we see additional billings is where a client will reach out to us. For example, with last year's leases, there was an implementation of accounting standards for leases last year, and they'll reach out to them, like, Mo, I don't have the resources in-house this year to address G A S B eighty-seven for the leases. Do you have a team at Markham that could help me digest the contracts and help me come up with the, with the journal entries? Under the accounting standards or auditing standards, I, us three, are not able to do that because then it's an independence issue. I cannot audit my own information or my own work, so we had to hire somebody, engage somebody within Markham to help out these clients. So that's not, I don't, I don't think it's an additional fee. It's just because it was an additional service and value that we brought to our clients.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert, any more questions?
I do. I have two other questions. Kind of a follow-up to that is that since COVID, you know, we've seen a crazy roller coaster within the workforce. And just curious if you could talk a little bit about your workforce and the ability to ensure that you can maintain your other clients as well as possibly take on us as a new client?
Thank you. So before we engage, before, the way the R F P process is, the City of West Palm Beach issues an R F P. Once we receive the R F P, before we even put it together, we have to ensure within, due to our internal controls at Markham, is to ensure that we have the proper staffing. So we would not be responding to the City of West Palm Beach if we didn't have the staffing. Actually, this is already blocked off just because it's an internal process that we have in-house, that we do not respond to an R F P unless we have the resources. As mentioned in the slide, we are a national firm with over four thousand employees. Over just locally, nearly fifty in West Palm Beach, just for the government sector. So it's, it's, we do have a long, a deep bench of professionals that have dedicated their entire careers to this practice. As I mentioned, I have less, we have less than five percent turnover in our government service team members. The last two individuals that left our team went to go work for two of our audit clients. So, so we have a very good history.
I have another question, if you all don't.
Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. Kind of a follow-up to that, and I know that you are not mind readers and that a lot of things happen that cause change. But given your experience and your national presence, I'm curious if you have any indication or any thoughts on why the city moved away from your services previously?
Okay, great question and a good clarification. The city has a resolution or ordinance that requires mandatory rotation every five years. So it wasn't nothing of disagreement. As mentioned, we audited the city from 2011 to 2015, and then there was a mandatory rotation. Pleased to say that if you're compares to some of your other auditors, in certain situations, the city did not complete all five years with other auditors. So I think it speaks volumes to the fact that we did complete our tenure throughout the five years.
Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Ward?
I have a question. I want, I'm wondering, I'm glad to hear that you have a great staff in West Palm and that they're local. And I'm sure that helps to ensure that the audits are issued on time. But can you talk about your process in terms of just ensuring that we are getting everything turned in on time, other than staffing, if there's any other hesitations that we might?
Great question. So as, there's four phases. The first phase is the planning phase. What we do is, once we're engaged, we provide city staff a list of all the items that we need in order to ensure that we have all the documents to proceed with the audit. It's pretty much a standard, a standard template of requests from capital assets to utility bills, and it is tailored to the City of West Palm Beach and any new accounting standards. I referenced this slide is because this is the portal that we use to transfer information between the City of West Palm Beach and Markham. So yes, it first serves as a security portal. Everything here is encrypted. We're dealing with very sensitive information. But what our clients really love about this is that everything that is uploaded into this doc, into this platform is timestamped. And anyone that the city would like to give access to on your phone, you could log on to your phone and see if the City of West Palm Beach has provided Markham thirty, forty, fifty, or sixty percent of the documents that they have requested on a real-time basis. In addition to that, not only does it keep city staff accountable, it keeps me accountable. Because you're able to log on and say, the finance department provided Mo this document two days ago, and he still hasn't opened it. So it keeps both, not only the city personnel accountable, but it keeps me accountable. And again, I think we included over fifteen reference letters. Our goal is to issue the financial statements as soon as possible. The R F P intended, or his intention was that the city would like to issue this by March thirty-first, and that's not an issue. We have the time, resources, and personnel to get that done.
Thank you. And can you talk a little bit about the communication with the city? I know that you're mentioning the inflow and making sure you can see when they've looked at it, when you've looked at it. But what if you notice that they haven't looked at it? What would be the next step?
So the first thing would be to, we suggest our clients that we have weekly status meetings. I think it's best to have a weekly status meeting, not only for all of us to be on the same page, but also for us to not lose momentum. So we'll provide on a, on a, on a weekly meeting. What we do is we'll have a conference call or onsite, whatever works best for the city staff. And it's pretty easy because all I have to do is open inflow. It's on a real-time basis, so it's not, what was there, or did I send something via email to this team member? No, it's all going through one and being funneled through one portal. And then I also wanted to highlight this, this audit methodology because on the fourth, on the fourth step, where it says, discuss results with management and exit conference. This is very important because whatever recommendations, advice, or items we have to bring to your attention at the end of the audit, we're not going to put pen to paper and write them and produce them to you without having an exit conference with you and your city staff. Not only do we want to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row, but we want to make sure that our understanding of situations and our agreements are correct. Because we're not going to be in a situation where I produce a recommendation and I don't have a full picture of the scenario. So I think it speaks volumes to the fact is, we're going to have constant communication throughout the audit process, and rest assured, we will not issue our final report until we meet with personnel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. So we're ready to introduce our second ranked proposer, Cherry Beckert.
Of course, I can't find what I'm looking for as I'm, of course, I'm here. But good morning. Thank you all for having us. I'm Jeff Zeichner with Cherry Beckert. And I'm on your proposal as your concurring reviewer, your quality control reviewer. I wanted to thank you for having us because honestly, I think it's somewhat difficult. I think your job is hard distinguishing between accounting firms. Sometimes what we do is very technical. And really picking out why we're technically superior or more effective is a hard choice, particularly if you're just doing it from a proposal, a submitted proposal. So I think it's really smart for you guys to have us in and get to know us a little bit. Because honestly, I think the biggest impact of your decision and the biggest impact on management is going to be, you know, who are the people they're working with? So having the opportunity to get to know us a little bit is a great idea, just to know, you know, are we cooperative? Are we collaborative? Are we easy to work with? Are we flexible? So I'm really happy that you're giving us a bit of an opportunity to get to know us a tad. So speaking of, these are the core members of our proposed engagement team. I'm there listed as your concurring reviewer. I wanted to point out that Mark Escoffery is our small business or disadvantaged business partner, and he was planning on being here. Unfortunately, he is ill and not able to attend, but he is registered with both the city and the county as a small business enterprise. He's been on your program for a long time, and he's very appreciative of the program that gives him the opportunity, you know, to work on these larger projects and to have his people, you know, work with our teams, and he is very thankful. And I've worked with Mark personally. I think he's going to be a great asset to the team and to the city. Also, Lauren Stroke is on our proposal as the engagement partner. And she was here last week. Unfortunately, it's also the first day of school, and we did not want her to miss that. So I've brought a surrogate partner with us. Eric will speak a little later, but Erica is an audit partner locally here in South Florida. And hopefully, this kind of demonstrates the depth of our firm's resources, that, you know, we can't have team members that have conflicts. And we have, we have plenty of resources that can come and make sure that the city is well-served. So Erica is going to represent Lauren today. Anthony will introduce himself later. But if you're not familiar with Cherry Beckert, I did want to give you a sort of overview of our firm. We are a large firm, about fifteen hundred employees, a hundred and forty partners. And I think, you know, most large firms and for other firms that you're interviewing, you know, we are making large investments in I T, both in our ability to serve you, communication tools, and even more so, you know, I think the industry is looking towards artificial intelligence, A I, to improve the auditing process, to make it more effective and more efficient, and really ensure the quality of your financial information. quality of your financial information. So like other large firms, Cherry Beckert's doing all those things. We're making those investments. We're trying to improve the quality of our audits and the efficiency of our audits, and really our ability to serve entities like the city. But I think what differentiates Cherry Beckert from some of the other large firms are that we are firmly committed to serving the public sector. State and local government is a priority for Cherry Beckert. You know, we do have other industries, but in terms of our key focus, state and local is a key part of our strategy. And, you know, just to note, we actually have two hundred employees across the firm. They're dedicated to doing nothing but state and local government audits. And those two hundred employees are charging about a hundred and twenty thousand hours annually to doing audits just like the cities. And, you know, because we have such deep experience serving entities just like West Palm Beach, you know, our people are really able to bring expertise, and even more so than accounting and auditing, oftentimes we really are able to add value that goes beyond the scope of the audit to our clients. So to bring it in a little more narrowly from the firm as a whole, I want to talk to you about the experience of our proposed engagement team. So I put this slide together, not as a, not to represent all of the governmental clients Cherry Beckert serves, that's a huge list. I didn't even want it to represent all of the Florida public sector clients we serve. The list I put together right there is just a list of the municipalities that the proposed engagement team serves, the people on that first slide have served. And as you can see, we have really extensive experience auditing Florida municipalities, entities very similar to West Palm Beach. We understand what it's like, the challenges your city face. You're rapidly growing, you're a dynamic city. So when it comes to like these incredibly ambitious transportation projects that you have, your park projects, what it's like, what the challenges of running a municipal utility in a growing environment are, even your grants that you receive, our people have extensive experience. We've seen all of that, and we understand how to audit it, and we understand how to give advice and how to help you navigate some of the issues that these things cause. And really, as a sidebar to having this experience as a team, you know, because we understand the auditing and the accounting, the real thing that we can bring is we can focus on process. You know, because you're not teaching us the accounting of the auditing, we can focus on making sure our process is effective, efficient, and that we meet the city's reporting deadlines. We help you achieve your reporting goals. So to talk a little bit further about process, Anthony, would you mind kind of getting into details about how we audit?
Thanks, Stefan. Good morning. My name is Anthony Walsh, and I'm a senior manager with Cherry Beckert. I would serve as the engagement manager for this audit. As you can see from our timeline here, as soon as we get the word, we're going to hit the ground running internally, making sure that we've done everything we need to do in order to start the engagement. We'll reach out to the prior auditor in order to gain information about how they ran their engagement and the things that happened during that audit season. We'll then schedule our interim work to be the, you know, late September, early October, fall range. During that timeline, we're also going to start having weekly progress meetings with the team to make sure that they know what's going on and everyone is on the same page. We'll fast forward into that late winter, early spring, I don't know what we want to call that here in South Florida, but, you know, that late January, early February timeframe to start the actual fieldwork for the engagement, working through that, again, keeping up those progress meetings until we issue the audit. The big thing I want to draw attention to, though, is that we will have a meeting after the engagement is over. We're going to call that our lessons learned, where we're going to sit down with all the stakeholders of that engagement and say, okay, what went right? What went wrong? What can we do better? What's coming up next year that we need to plan for? And we'll take that and, and work forward, again, looking to repeat a similar timeline. Our audit approach, again, begins with planning. You know, we have our assessment of internal controls. We'll do our testing, and then, of course, have that exit conference we spoke about. We have that deep government experience. We also have disaster recovery experience. Knock on wood, we aren't going to need to deal with that for several, you know, years. Nobody wants to deal with that, but we do have that experience. We have contacts, you know, at the Department of Emergency Management and FEMA for, for when those things come up, and our team members are well-trained on that. We have deep Gatsby experience. We have a director who recently just returned from a fellowship at the Gatsby, so as internally, we are abreast of all of the changes that are coming, all of the changes that need to be implemented this year, like Gatsby ninety-six. We have IT professionals in our team, and as well, we've spoken about that AI that we're looking to implement to, you know, enhance our audit quality, but also make things more efficient. Along with that includes something we call Smartsheet. It's essentially the request list that your teams would be familiar with in the past, where we would, you know, have your team upload documents so that we can carry out the audit. And one of the things that's great about that is for continuity. I'm sure, you know, we'll be speaking about that later, but things happen in public accounting. You'll always have the top-down approach there, and you'll always have that Smartsheet to keep our team focused and, and engaged in having the right documentation to move forward. And then, no surprise, if something happens, if something comes up, if we find something, we're not going to wait until the end of the audit to surprise you. I don't like that feeling. Nobody likes that feeling. We're going to come to you as soon as we find it, and we're going to talk through the solution to addressing those issues. Steamless transition, again, we're going to meet with that prior auditor. We're going to gain all of that information that we can in order to effectively plan our audit and effectively understand the city's activities. We're going to use that technology, Smartsheet, some of the other AI technologies we have that, that can help us provide better quality and efficiency. Again, our team members are very experienced in auditing Florida municipalities. Of course, we have experience outside of Florida, but, you know, specifically Florida, we have that experience. You've got a team here in Florida. None of us are far when it comes to coming to, to the city of West Palm Beach. We're all able to get here in a reasonable amount of time for meetings. And then, of course, we have the technology that if, you know, we need to pick up the phone or have a video call or screen share, we have that technology in order to facilitate that.
I'll jump back in quickly for this. You asked us in your request to address the fee structure. There's really not, nothing that here that's changed from the proposal. You've had these numbers. You know, the one thing I will add is that our fees are inclusive of meeting your goals for disadvantaged business enterprises. You know, Mark's our joint venture partner, and he's agreed to do eighteen percent of the work and share in the revenue. But other than that, our fees are simply really the same as what was in the proposal you received. The last question you asked us to address was our commitment to team continuity, and I think it's a great question, because, you know, turnover in staff has a big impact on the city. So as our, as our surrogate for Lauren and our local audit partner, I think you're probably in a good position to talk about our commitment to making sure you're served by the best team.
First of all, I wanted to introduce myself. My, my name is Erica Ruiz, and in the South Florida team, I as, we work in the tri-county area, which is West Palm Beach, Broward, and Miami-Dade. I also assist with the Tampa and Orlando clients as needed. Right now, I'm here to support Lauren, which she is located, you know, like they mentioned, for continuity. So we strive to maintain the same team. We will try. So, but as you know, right now, we're facing, you know, continuous, you know, turnover on seniors. So we will have the top-down approach, in which Anthony will be here with us through the team, all the engagements together with Lauren, and Anthony will take the opportunity to step down as a senior and lead the project, for you not to see that, you know, to have a smooth transition and continuity with the team members. So if we, at times, we're going to bring a staff, so they can bring you new perceptions and best practices from other offices. If we replace a senior, keep in mind, like they said in the beginning, we audit different one hundred and fifty-plus entities similar to yours, so they will bring the knowledge of the industry. They will just get the knowledge from you, from your, from the city of West Palm Beach through Anthony. So you will not experience that, you know, the consistency. Now, we want to keep our client promise. What is that? How do we do that? By adapting to you. We do work with many clients, and everyone is different. Even though there are different cities, everyone is different. Our key is adapting and listen, listening. Communication is the key. As Anthony had mentioned earlier, we're going to have our strategic meeting, in which we're going to listen to you, how to keep you updated in a weekly basis, to keep you updated. So we have a proactive team that is consistently working with you, and if you have any issues, any accounting matters that need to be addressed, they will be addressed timely. And that's the key that everyone, all my clients, it's always looking for. Our firm solutions, we, as any other firm, we have the same resources. We will have our specialists as needed. We will bring the team that you need. And making a difference is by listening to you. I think adapting and listening is the key to anything. Industry advisors, you will have Lauren. She's a specialist, and she knows this industry as no one else does. And, you know, I mean, she knows well, as you can see, all the different cities that we do. Seek to understand. We will always reach out if we need to understand any of the processes, as Anthony had mentioned, through our processes, to understand how you, you work in your operations, because it's that's important for us. And where is it to work with? At any time you have a question, you can just pick up the phone and call Lauren, or pick up call Anthony, or any team member. We will be there. We will try to be there for you and work with you, because that's the key. And like I said, adapting to you and communicating throughout the engagement, not just at the beginning and at the end, is the key to any success. And it's a team effort. We will work with you, and that's what we can promise. Any further questions? Do you have any question for us?
Thank you so much. I will open it up to the commissioners. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you. When you talked about kind of innovation and tech, like how do, what's your platform system? How do you continuously maintain communication and checks and balances to make sure that we're giving you everything, and you're reviewing it, and providing your feedback throughout this period?
I can help you with that answer, with that question. It's through our Smartsheet tool that Anthony mentioned. That's an IT system that is like an Excel file. It will have due dates into it, built into it, and it will have assignments, and everyone has access to it. It's through email. You can access at any given point, and it's an immediate update. So by doing that, everyone gets accountable. From my perspective and on your side, we can see the due date. You can see, your team can see the due date of the request. And everyone in our end, we can see when you submitted it, and as soon as we get automatic notifications, as soon as you submitted it, we can pick up the files and start working on it. And we, we will train you how to use it. It's very simple. It's like an Excel file, but in, in the internet. And we will have weekly calls, and we can have, you know, you will see the updates. And we can, you can also be, we can add you to be notified once your team members uploaded something. So everyone will be aware when the information has been submitted. And that's the best part, not to do it through emails, but do it through Smartsheet, because there is always a tracking of the data that was submitted, and, you know, we will get accountable for that as well. That's the beauty of it. And that will trigger, if it's, once you publish a due date, it goes into red. So that way, everyone knows. And once everything is provided and reviewed by us, we strike, strike out that one, so you know that the only open items is the remaining items, and everyone can have access. Anyone you decide will have access to view, even as a leader, if you're just the project manager, to make sure that your team members is submitting the information, you will have access just to view and see how everything is progressing. So you can see that your team has done, your chair is now on the auditor's side. And we do that from day one. When we meet, Anthony will walk you through that, and he will explain how to use it.
Now, just add to that, Erica. You know, what Erica's describing is our, our project management tool, which are Smartsheets, and I think a lot of firms use them. And they're great communication tools, and they're great for project management. What also we do to complement this, we will come up with a plan. And we'll, before we start our fieldwork, we will come up with a plan, and we'll make a milestone calendar. And we'll, we'll put this milestone calendar past manager to make sure that we're, we're, you know, we have realistic milestones. And the goal is to start with your reporting deadline. You know, this is a line that should not move. You need to have your financial statements issued at this point. So we'll back that up all the way to the beginning. So this all goes in Smartsheets, the deliverables go in Smartsheets, the, the things that we owe you and the things that you owe us. So we combine that with, you know, just sort of old-fashioned progress meetings, and we decide with management how frequently they should be. I personally think they should be weekly, to, to make sure we have a transparent process. So during those progress meetings, we'll go through the deliverables that are on our milestone calendar up on Smartsheets, and we'll say, have we met our milestones? Where are we in this process? Are we on track? Are we ahead of time? Or are we seeing some challenges? And if there's challenges, what are they? And by hashing these out on a weekly basis, we're able to correct. We can course correct. We can say, hey, you guys are having trouble getting this information. What's the problem? Maybe there's a different audit procedure we can use, or maybe we can figure out a different way to communicate with the person we're trying to get information from. And that way, we can keep your project on track, you know, just all the way knowing that that last milestone, that the audit report can't be delayed. So it's a very powerful tool for project management. We also, I'm sorry.
In addition to that, just to add to Jeff's opinion, comment is also, we will adapt to your preferences. If you also, everyone wants to communicate it through email, because not everyone might want to access that tool, right? Or we will send either as an agenda, all the open items, or anything you want to be aware of, what's the pending and crucial items that needs to be completed in order to meet our goals. So that's what I had mentioned earlier, adapting to you, listening at the beginning, is listening, in addition to our tools, what else do you need to be aware of where we are, where we stand, so we can finish on time and be, you know, meet our deadlines and our promise, which is the deliverable problem.
You'd asked about other IT we use, just quickly to go over it. We use Engagement as our engagement manager software, where papers go. We have all the communication tools that you'd expect to work with for, for working remotely. We're also investing heavily in AI, as we talked about earlier. We use a system called Active Data. We use Idea, which is called a computer automated tool. And we just started investing and starting encouraging people to experiment with Data Snipper.
Yes, and also we use MindBridge, which is another tool.
MindBridge as well.
MindBridge as well, which is similar to Active Data.
And this really speaks to audit innovation, right? It's, we don't want to do things the way we've always done them. We want to think of really two things. Our primary goal is to protect you guys. As elected officials, you have a fiduciary duty to your constituents. You have a fiduciary obligation to your creditors and your grantors. We understand that we work with management, but our responsibility is to you. We're here to protect you. So when we look for audit innovation, what we're looking for is number one, to improve audit quality. Through using automation, you know, audits are always based on sampling, but through automation, is there a way where we can look at all of your transactions? Can we identify transactions that are unusual, that deserve more attention by running? And trust me, I am not the person who's writing these scripts. But I am encouraging people to use these. And, and, you know, when you talk about innovation, you need to encourage people to try new things and make it okay if they fail. So it's a big initiative now for our teams to just actively think, for audit partners, to say, all right, guys, what are you going to change? What, how are we going to use these tools? How are we going to give them better quality, and how are we going to make it easier for them?
I wanted to follow up on that point about AI. I think, obviously, it's the way of the future, but in terms of auditing, it's not my expertise, but it seems like there's a lot of precision that is needed. So AI is such a new technology and very innovative, but I guess, is there some kind of oversight that you're double-checking that the information that you're providing from AI is actually accurate?
Yeah, so MindBridge has provided us with all of the insight into the, how the program works, for us to understand that the, it operates effectively. From there, all of our managers and partners are trained enough to, to know that what we're looking at out of MindBridge isn't just fluff, right? Or that the, the algorithm isn't working correctly. It's, not to get super technical, but it uses a mapping of the general ledger for the, the city, or whatever government, or whatever client. And from there, can perform those analytics based on the algorithms that they've explained to us. They also have a SOC two report, which is where an, an audit firm comes in and evaluates their technology, making sure that they're meeting all of the, the privacy safeguards, and that it's just kind of working the way that they're saying it's going to work. And that is publicly available as well.
Let me just add to that. You know, as an engagement leader, as an audit, as an engagement leader, you know, I'm, I am actively asking my team is to incorporate these tools into our audit procedures. And I'm saying, you know, we don't, we don't know the extent of how they can be useful yet, but the, the goal is to encourage them to try new things, you know. But at this point, I'm going to say this as a, as an audit leader, it's never our only evidence. We are using it. We're looking for people to experiment with it. We're looking for ways that it might become really effective. But we, we would never just take something that was spit out of a data analytics program and make our findings on it. Typically, what we do currently, the goal really would be to get a data dump from your ERP system. Let's just drop in all of the transactions for the entire audit period that the city's entered into. It's a phenomenal amount of data. And then we would think about what could go wrong. As an engagement team, we'd say, okay, what might be some red flags? What's a high-risk transaction? And we would define that. And we would define that. And we would, not me, maybe Anthony, would write a script to identify these characteristics of a transaction that would concern us. Maybe it's things that would impact the budget near year end, when, you know, people might be worried about their budget or overrunning their budgets. Let's look at things that are getting, you know, we could write a script that say, let's look at transactions that hit accounts that were within so much of their budget towards the year end and see if they were classified correctly. And then the Data Snipper or the bright, sorry, so MindBridge. MindBridge would spit out a list of transactions. And we'd say, okay, these transactions met these characteristics. So now we need to have an auditor, a person, actually look at the transaction and use their professional judgment to determine if there's a problem, if it needs to be looked at more closely. That's how we're using it now.
Yes, and Chrissy, and to add to your point, how do we verify that also when we put it in the data dump? We not only just put it in, we also verify that it ties back to your books, that the numbers agree with the balance sheet and financial statements that were provided to us, to ensure that we're going to be looking at the right information, just in case there is a system error, that something got done and inserted wrong. So we have to do the diligence as an audit leader that we look for completeness and accuracy of the data that was put into the system. So we do our tests and controls for that matter.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Lambert, did you have a question?
Yes. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you so much for your presentation. And in your introduction, you talked about just things that come up. And as you can see, we had some things come up as well with some of our colleagues, so we certainly understand that and appreciate first day of school complex. So I really appreciated in your comments, you've mentioned this a couple of times, but the listening and adapting. And Mr. Walsh, I think it was on your slide that you mentioned the lessons learned meetings after the engagement. So you've talked a little bit anecdotally about some things that you might do to adjust along the way, but I was just curious if you could think of any specific examples of anything that came about in these lessons learned meetings where it yielded a new process for the next year or that helped you with your next client?
Come with that? Yeah. Yeah, so I've had engagements where we've had these meetings. Again, we're talking not just about how we're carrying out the audit, which has come up before, right? I've had lessons, I had lessons learned meetings in February 2020 and then all of a sudden, you know, the world changed on us and we had to completely change everything. But things that have happened along the way, right? How much more do you want us on site? How does that change the processes that we're doing? How does that change things for your team? What accounts are we looking at, right? I've had clients get hit by major hurricanes, you know, right around the time of our lesson learned meeting. And then we have to go, okay, how are we going to adjust those procedures, knowing that we're going to need to test those grants, knowing that we're going to need to worry about those revenues, knowing that there's going to be inflated expenditures that are probably higher risk just due to the fact that they're emergency expenditures and not going through the traditional cash disbursement process. Things like that. I've had lessons learned meetings, unfortunately, where we found out that there was, you know, a fraud that had been uncovered and how we're going to have to adapt our procedures in that following year to address that situation and making sure that there weren't other situations occurring around that. So hopefully I've addressed the question without beating around too much.
Let me, Erica, did you want?
I had, you know, I had been doing this for a long time and we do that every year. And I had seen so many times clients that we get brand new clients, similar to you, and which we ask them at the end. And we ask them at midpoint, what is working and what do we want to implement, because we don't just want to do it at the end, right? So we will do a midpoint to make sure that everything is working after entering work. But if after year end, we will ask, and definitely most of the times is because it's new teams or, you know, the interim work was not a good timing because you were at closing, we learned that of the, you know, of the next quarter. So we will implement those changes on the upcoming audit. But like I said, we usually, when we get a new client, we do a midpoint after interim work, what worked, what is working and what changes and tweaks throughout the remaining of the timeline we want to make. Like I said, it's adapting and we don't want to just wait until everything didn't go through as, and as smooth as we wanted. We want to do a midpoint during that year because we always get new clients and we want to make sure that we provide the best service to you because at the end of the day, that's what makes a difference in the results of the audit.
Thank you.
Real quickly, you know, so it's a great point. So our goal is to constantly improve. And I think when we hold these meetings, I almost always have something. I've never come out of one of these meetings and not processed. But again, the focus of our audit, the things that we understand is our number one commitment is to protect you and your fiduciary responsibility to the citizens and all the stakeholders of West Palm Beach. So we are going to make sure that the audit quality is beyond question. We're going to make sure that the financial information that you issue is of the highest quality and integrity and can be relied on by your citizens, by your creditors, by your grantors. So in going into this lessons learned, you know, obviously our focus is protecting to protect you. But oftentimes we'll slow the project down or with challenges, the final deadline. There's issues that come from the audit team and there's issues that come from management. Usually we can control those. You know, I can holler at my team to work harder or we can go to the city administration and ask them to get with engineering so they give you those values on the donated land. You guys can control those. So often the things you can't really control have to do with third parties. Actuaries maybe, we need actuarial information to make our accounting estimate. Maybe, as I said, maybe values for donated land from engineers that come from within the city. But if we get to the lessons learned meeting, we talk about number one, what went really well? And maybe the planning meeting went really well. We want to keep doing that. Your milestone calendar, that looked really well. Let's keep doing that.
Thank you. Time. Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. And I think that's it. I guess we'll be ready for the next team.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to hear presentations from the third ranked firm, RSM, and they should be in shortly.
Good morning. It's great to be back here. You know, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present our qualifications. I'm Bob Feldman. I head up the firm's national government practice and I'm based right here in South Florida. In the essence of time, with me here today is Brett Friedman, serving as your audit partner. We also have Alexandra Laurier, who would be your IT auditor. We have Sardou Myrtelis, who's filling in for Gene Borno, who would be serving as your manager as well. And you'll have a chance to hear from them shortly throughout the presentation. But before I do that, we also have with us today Zanora Ward from Warding Company. We have the pleasure of working with Zanora on a number of government engagements, including Palm Beach County. So before we get started, I'd like to turn it briefly over to her.
Thank you, Bob. Good morning. My name is Zanora Ward. I'm with the firm of Warding Company. We're located off of 45th Street in West Palm Beach. All of our staff were born and raised in West Palm Beach and still currently work and live in West Palm Beach. My staff, myself, I have over 30 years governmental experience. The other person, Angela Hartnett, she has over 15 years governmental experience. And our newest staff member, Tanisha Campbell, she has over three years of experience. We've worked with RSM for many years. We've developed a great relationship. We utilize their computers, their resources, they provide continuing education. We've really developed a great partnership. And we have worked with them for several years on various jobs, Palm Beach County, the school district and the city of West Palm Beach. And we look forward to serving you. I'd also like to thank you, the commission, for allowing small businesses these opportunities because we have gained so much experience throughout these audit processes by working with the larger firm. Again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Zanora. So in the time that we have with you today, what we wanted to do is we wanted to focus our presentation on those things that are most important to you. I think Donna highlighted them in her opening comments. So we're going to be talking about industry experience. We'll talk about technical expertise and resources. We'll talk about our ability to meet your deadlines, which is super important, and we'll talk about audit fees as well. So a little bit of perspective from an industry, and you can see the handout that we actually have on the screen. You know, from a national perspective, RSM has made government one of our main focus areas. It's probably in the top five industries that we serve as a firm. You can see on the bottom of the screen that we serve over 800 governments across the country. We also have about 800 people that work, working in government, serving governments. So that's, that large footprint that we have nationally extends to our Florida practice. Government is the single largest industry that we do in Florida. And you can see as we look at, you know, that footprint, you can see on the handout again, we see industry experience, you can see the cities that we represent, you can see the counties, you can see the school districts that we represent. You know, most important of all is, you know, having served you all as your auditors, we've had the honor of serving you twice, both in 2006 to 2010 and again from 2016 to 2019. You know, we also have a large presence in terms of doing audits in, with large governments in Palm Beach County. The county itself is a client, the school board is a client, the water management district is an audit client as well. And so while it's great to have that large presence in Florida, your experience is going to be largely dictated by the people you work with. So you can see on the other side of the handout that I gave you, you can see the team that we have highlighted in terms of serving you. And what I just wanted to point out is that, you know, these are our very best people that we have. The important things to point out is that Brett Friedman, who again would be serving as your audit partner, Gene Borno, who would be serving as your audit manager, are people that have served the city before. So the critical thing is they bring all that intellectual knowledge of the city in terms of back. But what we've also tried to do is integrate new team members as well, so that we can integrate also a fresh perspective as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it briefly over to Brett Friedman and we'll proceed.
All right, thank you, Bob, and good morning, everybody. I think one of the key differentiators between us and the other firms is the breadth and depth of our national resources. You know, we are by far the largest firm that specializes in government. You know, it's one of the key areas that we serve in Florida. But I think one of the key things about that is also we realize the importance and our team is a little different. Like we bring additional members to the team beyond straight audit folks. You'll notice in the proposal on the other side, you know, our team includes IT specialists, cyber specialists, actuaries, construction cost review. Just to give you some examples of what that means, you know, we take a holistic approach to the audit. And for example, a city we took over last year, our actuaries who work for us were looking at one of their pension plans, realized that they, the depletion analysis was not done and therefore the rates they were using were wrong. And then that pension liability was actually significantly misstated. And where that's important is, you know, those are future obligations that the city would have to come up with funding for. And, you know, it's one of the things that we know, it's not the best thing to tell you, oh, you have to come up with more money. But I think it's important that you know that. I mean, there's another example where for a police and fire pension board, we went on behalf of the city and said, hey, you know, there are some assumptions you're using that we think aren't the best to use. And again, same thing. It ended up higher liability for our client, but our client wanted that because they wanted to properly fund the pension. You know, they realized, hey, okay, we have to pay more, but better we do that because it's coming anyway. Had another example where the presumptive heart and hypertension. We were looking at their workers' comp plan and realized the actuary hadn't separated those cases. And in Florida, presumptive heart and hypertension is a much higher obligation and liability. So those are just some examples of things where our specialists help us as part of the audit process to help protect our clients and look for potential issues. Another area I think that's very important is in the IT space. Again, we bring the IT folks in there and I'm sure you've all seen, you know, IT, everything, it's so much more a part of our lives, the complexity of IT and what goes on, whether it's looking at general controls, cybersecurity and new broadband stuff that's coming in. There's a lot of different things there that it takes more than just an IT auditor. Everyone at firms here, they're good firms, they have IT auditors. What we have that's different is all these other experts because we have a national practice. So we have the depth and size to be able to have those specialists. Also, another thing that's important, which I know you asked about, was expertise. Again, as a national firm, one thing that's different is it's not only me and our team, we also have national leaders that sit on all the standard setting bodies, including the state and local government expert panel, the government audit quality center. What this does is when all these new standards come out, like leases last year and subscription based IT this year, a new reporting model, you know, we know not only what is written, but our people are there in the rooms, on the committees, so they help our clients. And we're able to get with our client and help guide them through that, you know, walk them through making these implementations and changes. It's just some of the differences. I think another thing also is we're here in South Florida. And one of the things we find too is that being with the client, we can come on short notice. You know, we work a lot in this area. We serve the school district, the water management district, the county. We previously served the city here. So we spend a lot of time to where when you're dealing with transactions, we can come in and just take a look and give you feedback on, hey, you know, you have a thought on where it's going to go legally, but this is how the accounting will look. And we feel that helps too, because sometimes when you're doing these deals for like cell phone towers and things, you don't necessarily realize the implications. Like you think, oh, we're getting all this money out of general fund, but really it's deferred over 30 years, so it's not really coming into your budget yet. Things like that. One of the things also is by being local, we have deep resources. So we have people here who can help whenever needed. You know, to me, that's a difference. I know you had asked about that. You know, if there is an issue where there's turnover, you know, given that this is what we do and what we focus on, you know, we would present other people to come in and work on the engagement. Just an example like Bob gave, you know, Sardou's here to help pitch in, you know, from a manager support because Gene and Anil aren't here. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alex, just to quickly tell you a little more about IT.
Good morning, everyone. As Bob mentioned, my name's Alexandra Laurier. I'm a director in our technology risk consulting practice down in South Florida. So my overall responsibility would be to lead the IT audit effort for the city. In terms of our team's role, really where our role would be, would be to review your internal IT processes, your internal controls as well. So as you think about sensitive areas such as system access, any changes that are being made into your IT environment or even certain interfaces or automated processes around Oracle, which is your ERP system, those are some of the areas that I would foresee us helping the city on. Terms of the team, I'm really proud to say that we have a very multidisciplinary team. And what I mean by that is we're not necessarily IT auditors. Many of us actually worked in technology first, which I feel is very different in the audit world. So some of us were in security. I, for example, used to help implement systems and do production support. So I feel like when we're working with the IT departments, it's able to resonate with them as we're kind of speaking the same language and also we're able to provide meaningful recommendations. I'm also happy to say that there is a history amongst our IT team as well. We've worked with the city in the past. As Bob mentioned, we worked with the audit as well back in 2019. And even beyond that, we had helped internal audit with an IT risk assessment in the past. So I feel like that's going to be incredibly helpful to bring back that institutional knowledge if we were to get selected. In addition to the core team, one of the things that I also feel like it's important to mention, and Brett mentioned this earlier, there is an extension of the team as we're able to bring our national specialists. So for example, as you may all know, right now, RSM is helping the city with a security risk assessment. We're doing a penetration test at this time. That work is currently in progress. So I feel like that's something that we're able to come in, help identify potential risks and vulnerabilities to help protect the city. And that's, that's just one example. We've had clients, and Bob, you can probably remember this, we've had customers reach out to us because, for example, unfortunately, they've gotten hacked in the past and they've called us and say, hey, we need your help. Can you bring forensic specialists to help us? We've had others that do credit card transactions as well, and they knew that they were reaching a certain threshold and they've, they've needed certain guidance, so we've been able to bring those specialists as well. So I feel like that's one area that our clients love working with us because it goes so much more beyond the IT audit world. So when there are special needs or maybe there's guidance or quite honestly, just a matter of maybe bouncing ideas, they're able to count on us. And with that, I'll pass it on to Sardou.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Alex. So there are three areas I wanted to touch on related to project management. We pride ourselves, the first one is we pride ourselves in communication, open communication with our clients. We have touch points throughout the year that gives us insight on transactions they've undertaken during the fiscal year and also give gives us an opportunity to give them updates as relates to GASB standards. As you guys know, the GASB 96 standard is something that's being implemented governments across the state. And that's something we've already started discussions and providing resources to our clients in order for them to start with the implementation process. The second item, we make sure your deadline is our top priority. For that, we have specific processes in place to ensure we meet it. For example, we have kickoff meetings, AKA slash boot camps with management, where we discuss timelines, and also the preferred lines of communication, and also, as it relates to providing information and the audit process itself. We also have weekly status meetings throughout the audit. That helps to make sure that everyone's on the same page as it relates to what's pending and what needs to be provided. The last area is the smooth transition. When changing auditors, we understand this may be a concern for management. The goal is to make this transition feel as seamless as possible. We plan to leverage our tools and resources. We have lots of experience with the transition phase. Another key part to consider is, we have prior experience working with the city, and most of the team members that are working on the engagement now are the ones who worked on the city prior. And with that institutional knowledge, that's something that your finance team would definitely appreciate. With that, I'll pass it back to Bob to close us up.
So, just one final thing before we wrap up, and this is probably the most important thing that we share with you. You know, we are fun people to work with. You can see from our proposal in terms of the practice that we've been, successful practice we've been able to build. It's all about the relationships we have with our clients. And I can't think of a better story to quickly share with you in the final minute that we have, in terms of the city of Fort Lauderdale. The city was faced with a situation with, as a result of torrential rainstorms, their city hall was flooded. They could no longer use city hall. They had to disperse to multiple buildings throughout Fort Lauderdale. We reached out to their finance team, invited them into our office. They worked for a week, side by side, in our offices, directly with us, and we were able to collaborate and be able to meet their deadlines under what was an extraordinary situation. I think it gives you a little bit of an idea. We truly care about our clients. We're committed to their success, and we would very much be committed to the success of you all, and we would really welcome and be honored to be back as your auditors again. So, with that, that concludes our presentation. We'll be happy to address any questions you have.
Thank you so much. I will turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioner Lambert, do you have a question?
Thank you so much for your presentation, and, you know, it's great just to see you all again. I think Brett, did you serve on our team before in the audit?
Yes, I did.
So, I think I recall when I was the chair of the audit committee, working with you. And I guess that goes to my question. So, you all mentioned that you all served as our audit auditor in 2006 to '10, and '16 to '19. And I understand that we typically have a five-year engagement, but it doesn't seem like either one of those went to the full five years. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Well, the first engagement was 2006 to '10, which was five years. The second one, I know there was some misunderstandings as far as the contract term, and so, it went through, it was a four-year term, that one. And that was working with the procurement people at the time.
Okay. And then, just a follow-up to that is, you talked a lot about having experience with our city in the past, and that would help you. Can you speak a little bit more specifically on why you think that that's an advantage?
Well, I think one of the things, you know, dealing with a complex city and what you're dealing with, all the issues, we already have understandings. We have those files that, we know all your processes. What we have to do is just get up to speed on the last three years what's changed, which will allow us really to dive right into where potential risks or issues could be. Whereas, another auditor that hasn't been here in 10 years, or hasn't been here ever before, they have to spend, usually, it takes two, three years to get to know your operations. Because there's just so much information. Understand, every city, even though you follow Florida rules, everybody's a little different, and really getting to know what is special about here and who to deal with, you know, that's one of the differences, that we don't have to deal. We get the ground running on both the financial audit and also on the grant audits. You know, we know the people in housing, how they operate. So, it's a much faster process. Another thing I know too, unfortunately, has happened to a lot of our clients, I know there's been a lot of turnover, you know, key department heads, things like that. I think we can be a steadying force. Again, we're new, because we haven't been here the last three years, but we can help in the fact that we don't have to try and figure things out. Like I said, we already know how the city operates. It's just kind of figuring out, okay, what changed in the couple of years we weren't here. So, I think that'll help the transition.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you. And I was peeking at your project management tool slide. Can you explain, just because we have been hearing, I mean, I know project management is key, and utilizing software, new technology helps all of us with the speedy process and make sure that nothing's dropped. Can you explain what differentiates your project management tool from others?
Sure. And actually, one of the things, I mean, we constantly, one of the things which Sardu didn't get a chance to mention is, every year, we constantly try to improve, continuous improvement. So, each client will have a meeting at the end of the year to go over what went well, what can be better. One of the things that came out of that about a year and a half ago is, we enhanced our tool to where, you know, it has all the information, it has all the items we need, but also, it's got this dashboard that shows you, area by area throughout the audit, where things stand. It's color-coded, you know, red, yellow, green, to show you what's passed due, what's been completed. So, it lets everybody know exactly where things stand. There's no miscommunications. When things are uploaded, they're uploaded into this secure site once, so you don't have to worry about, oh, are there different versions? So, we've made these enhancements, because, you know, using a shared site is one thing, but if you have to worry about version integrity, things like that, this project, you know, Surelink does all that. It maintains integrity, but also, it lets different people in the city know. That's the other thing, it's different people, like, you know, the staff in the finance department, they can get down to the nitty-gritty of, okay, what client-prepared items do we owe? Upper-level people can look and see just, how's the audit going, even just by looking at the charts, and it's different customized views. So, you could look at that and see, okay, hey, the capital assets people, they're behind, or this area's behind. It makes it easy for everybody to know where things are going. It also allows you, when we have our staff's meetings, we go straight to this and use this as a guide and say, hey, here's what's either, you know, passed due, or here's what's coming due in the next week. Keeps everybody, like Sardu was saying, keep them on point to make sure we stay on strategy. And it also has adjustments where we can acknowledge when items were received and when something's been completed. Which I know the finance staff appreciate that, because they like to know, okay, I'm capital assets, you're done with me, I can move on, do my day job, and, you know, go beyond the audit. So, it gives that piece to a layman, you know, just, you know, they could see where we are in the audit by this tool.
Yep. So, one thing I wanted to add, in addition to that too, is very interactive. Like, when your finance team uploads information, they can tag it as completed. And from there, as the auditors, we look at that information, and we can accept it or kick it back for follow-up. So, that helps make the thing be more interactive, and everyone kind of on the same page on where things stand, and if whatever I submit it is sufficient or not.
And then, I'll talk from the security standpoint, right? Because that's what I'm always concerned about. One of the beauties also about our tool is that you can restrict access to specific individuals, right? Because you want to make sure that not all the information is open to everyone. So, there's certain controls. I'll do the audit terminology now to make sure that it's restricted as well.
Thank you so much. I didn't see your fee structure in this presentation, but I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about the fee structure, and if it's all-inclusive, or if there's ever a time when additional payments will be required that maybe weren't incorporated into your proposal.
Happy to follow up on that. So, included in page 51 of the proposal is our fees. That is an all-inclusive schedule. I mean, the only time that we would vary from that if there was some very unusual event that occurred where the city was having some sort of difficulty, and, you know, if a difficulty arose, we would sit down, talk to you about it, determine whether or not the city had the ability to remedy that situation, or it required our assistance. But I will tell you, I mean, I've been, you know, at our firm for 34 years, heading up our government practice for many years. It is very seldom that we have ever come back and billed our clients additional fees. Very, very seldom. I know fees are an important part of the conversation here. We understand the need for, you know, all governments to make sure they're, you know, keeping fees to a minimum. Having served as your auditors twice, we truly understand the effort involved. We know what the hours are going to be, what the workload is going to be. The only thing that I ask of you all is not to let fees drive your decision. My feedback would be, choose whoever you feel is the right firm to serve you. If we're honored to be that firm that's selected, we'll find a way to make the fees work. We really want to be back here again, and we'll make it work. So, you know, choose whoever you feel can serve the best interests of the city. We'll make sure that we make the fees work, you know, that it's a fee that you feel comfortable with.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert, do you have another question?
Yes, thank you. I've asked each of the other presenters to give a specific example of how they have implemented efficiencies for change for either a current client, or maybe something that they learned on one client that they helped implement on another. I'd love to ask you all the same question, but with a specific interest in how you might recommend a use of technology. You've talked about use of technology within the audit process, but what about in recommendations that you might make to us?
Actually, I'll give you a recent one, which turned out to be great. You know, we use artificial intelligence, and one of our programs we use, we use this thing called Data Snipper. And actually, when we were working with Fort Lauderdale, we shared with them, they're like, okay, you know, they drafted the act for themselves, and then they were worried, oh, I have to foot everything and so on. We showed them with this technology. Not only will it foot the entire act for you, it also does a consistency check where it checks throughout the document, from the MDNA to the financials. So, we shared with them, we ran the program for them, and actually, we also gave them the website information so they can acquire the program themselves, to where every time they prepare reports internally, all that stuff, what used to take hours to do, it's done in minutes by the computer. And again, other examples like that, you know, we use, you know, we have another client where we gave them, you know, these bots to use to run security tests. Our IT folks gave them the scripts to run. You know, we run them as part of the audit. We give it to them throughout the year, same thing, to help make sure that no issues occur. So, always look for ways to make your life easier.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
On that same line, what do you find across the board are some of the bigger hurdles when you're dealing with municipalities, and just audits in general, where we can be the best, you know, city to provide information? Or do you notice any trends with those hurdles?
Well, unfortunately, one of the biggest trends which is affecting cities and areas, but especially cities, is resources. You know, we're seeing that, you know, more and more of our clients are running into challenges from the resource perspective. Couple of different things we've done there, like in one case, you know, we have a team out of Chicago that helps some clients draft their financials for them, because of the fact that, again, they have limited resources. You know, the other thing is, we've also learned to try and start working earlier. Like Sardu said, you know, the spit-a-thing as far as the new standard. We've already been working with clients this summer to help them implement, when we'll be coming back for final fee of work, January to March, to try and address those things early. Because also realizing, resource-wise, let's tackle things quickly, because then they have to deal with the budget process, then they have to deal with the year-end close. So, understanding also the windows of time, that, you know, we can't just interrupt what finance is doing. The finance has to continue to run the city's operations and do, you know, everything. So, realizing that we have to work with them, collaborate, find the right windows, and also trying to introduce technology or other support teams is what we're doing to help. But that's the biggest constraint every client's facing, is there's a resource constraint, and unfortunately, the new kids coming out these days, they aren't as excited about defined benefit plan. They're more in the here and now, so it's hard to recruit them in. We have the same problem, but every one of our clients are, that's my biggest question that my clients ask, you know, do you know anybody? You know, I'm looking for an assistant financier out there, looking for a controller. You know, Bob had one where they were looking for the CFO to fill that role, and it's a challenge. But realizing that challenge is where we try to work hand-in-hand, use tools like Surelink, and what we could do to, you know, spread the audit out too, so that it's not becoming an additional burden.
Thank you. I don't have any additional questions. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I think it was Ms. Ward, who you presented as your small business partner. I was just curious, Ms. Ward, if you could share a little bit more about your experience working with RSM. I believe you said that this isn't your first engagement with them, right?
Correct. We've worked with RSM for a number of years, probably over 15 years. We've worked with them on the Palm Beach County engagement. We've currently worked with them on the Palm Beach School District. We've worked with them here at the city of West Palm Beach. We have a great relationship, because we get to utilize their equipment, which then have real-time, online use for the audit program. So, it's no distinction. It's no subcontractor and RSM. We're one cohesive group. We've worked with them a number of years. We know their staff. We've worked with their staff. And then, we also take advantage of their continuing education and other resources.
Thank you so much.
Oh, and if I could add too, by the way, you know, there's another thing, it wasn't mentioned in the RFP ask for, so I didn't bring it up, but like, for example, on Palm Beach County, one of the things we did over time was, you know, we talked to the county, and Zanora took over the audit of the CRA on her own, on her letterhead. And maybe in the future, if the city wanted to do that, could be something done here as well. I know here, right now, it's part of the act for, but that's an example where, you know, she has, at least for the last seven or 10 years, issued the CRA for Palm Beach on her own. Again, another way to help her team grow.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ward, do you have any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lovinggood, are you going to walk us through the next steps?
Yes, thank you. So, that concludes the presentations from the top three ranked proposers. And before we move on to this election, I just want to thank each of the firms, their staff, for their time, for their presentations, and for their interest in doing business with the city, and thank you. So, the next step is the selection by the governing body, which is the city commission. And since compensation was part of the RFP evaluation factors, selection of the highest-ranked qualified firm as recommended by the audit committee, or the commission may document in the public records the reason for not selecting the highest-ranked firm. There certainly can be conversation by the city commission regarding each of the proposals, including the presentations and question answers that you've heard here today. If you believe that the audit committee has selected the highest-ranked firm, you can certainly make a motion to select Markham as the financial audit services proposer. If that motion does not pass, then I would give you ranking sheets.
I do have a question. Thank you. I noticed that when talking about fee structure, one of the proposers had mentioned, oh, that could be negotiated later on. Are we to consider their proposals as the final proposal, or once we select one, there might be further negotiation?
There can be negotiation of fees with the first-ranked proposer.
Okay. And then, follow-up question is, I know that there are different percentages of small business participation on different applications. Our minimum is 18%. Is that correct?
Correct. And on that, the minimum, yes.
Okay. And if there's a preference for making a suggestion by one of the commissioners, by myself, for an area for improvement in negotiation with our selected proposer, would I make that now, or after we select our choice?
You can certainly make that part of, you would need to select your first-ranked proposer and ask that be included in the negotiation. And if you have a percentage that you'd like them to try to achieve, we can certainly work towards that percentage.
So, in, I don't know if we're going to have further discussion, but before we make a motion, I would just say that I noticed that, while Markham is our first-ranked, and I certainly, first of all, want to say that all of the proposers are extremely qualified, and it is very difficult to make this decision. And so, I am grateful that the audit committee has also applied their expertise and experience to this process as well. has also applied their expertise and experience to this process as well. You know, I would say I would love to see whoever we choose to meet the standard that it looks like more than half of those that proposed meet for our small business partner, which was 25 percent. So should we move forward with Markham, it looks like they were at 18 percent with their small business partner. I'd love to see that negotiated to 25 percent if we could.
Yeah, I would just like to add, given, looking at score sheets, and I'm glad you asked for it to be printed out, Commissioner Lambert, because, you know, it clearly was well-thought-out scoring, and everyone seemed to rise to the occasion. So I appreciate everybody's time in this manner, being newer on this, knowing that some of you have been here in the past, and the interest from others is just, is phenomenal, because I think this is so important. It's more of the, no one wants to talk about auditing and financials and things like that, but how important it is for us to make sure that we're doing the best we can for our residents is so key. And so I thank you all for taking the time today and further explaining, and in addition to meeting with our audit committee. I did have a question for legal. In our contracts, just because I was kind of thrown by, you know, some of the four-year, five-year conversation, is there anything built in there that says if there's a change in circumstance of the company, if they're not meeting the milestones that we've built in, that we essentially terminate or negotiate? How does that, how is that built into the contracts?
Generally speaking, in our contracts, if there's issues with performance and things of that nature, we certainly, normally, and I'm just using this in a broad and general context, will include, you know, termination for cause, or termination with and without cause, and what the parameters around that are, periods for cure, things of that nature. I'd have to look at our last contract as it relates to auditing services as to what those specifics were, but those are generally terms that are included within your contracts.
Okay. And even the small business entity, if that wasn't met, if that 18 percent threshold, then we would have a problem, per se?
Yeah, and you'd look at what were the, what's the nature of the breach? Is there a provision for cure? Can they cure, can they not? And is termination appropriate? Yes.
Thank you.
I want to also say thank you so much to all the proposers today. It was fantastic to hear this. Last year, I served as the chair of our audit committee, and I think that is one of the most important committees that we have in the city, offering checks and balances for the whole city, and just ensuring that we have a comprehensive look and a second set of eyes. And so I know that that's the job that you're bringing to the table as well, so I really appreciate hearing more from you today. I think, just a question for you, Ms. Lovinggood, could you go over again what our next steps are? Are we taking a motion for the number one team, or are we doing our ranking right now?
So you would consider the proposals. You can make a motion to select the first-ranked proposer as recommended by the audit committee if the city commission concurs with their recommendation. If that motion fails, then I would give you ranking sheets.